Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, May 15, 2017, at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cumming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice President Snow will now lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
I'll start with the vision. Every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college career and life.
Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Gadding.
Here.
Holman.
Present.
America.
Present.
Palermo.
Here.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Williams.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. We will move on to our school spotlight and Kayla.
Madam President, Members of the Board, our OPS Proud Spotlight tonight is on Burke High's Louder Than a Bomb Slam Poetry Winners. Since September, Burke's Louder Than a Bomb Slam Poetry Team has been meeting once or twice a week to develop poetry to compete. Forty-two teams from Nebraska and Iowa competed between March and April for the finals, where the four remaining teams went head-to-head for the top team in the Great Plains Region. On Thursday, April 20th, the Burke Team made up of seniors took first place. We salute Evangeline Mantler, Bianca Swift, Emily Terrell, Jope Awamola, and Amina Abdulai. We also recognize the team coaches Pam Holman, Holly Murphy, and Nebraska Writers Collective poet, Michael Grove. Tonight, the Burke Team will perform their poem from the competition called "Seven Days."
Hi, this poem is called "Seven Days." Every morning I sift through my scarves carefully, looking for one that doesn't scream.
Terrorist!
I try flowers, animal prints, solids, the whole color spectrum. But no matter how plain or pretty it is, the ugly side always shows.
Day one.
I take the fabric and lay it out on a hard surface.
Ugly side up.
Do you wash your hair?
Do you even have hair?
I'd love not to have to do mine in the morning.
Imagine the amount of time saved!
No one wants to confront the ugly. Better to hide it.
Behind curtains of false smiles and facades of helpful hints.
Day two. Maybe I'll take it from one end and fold it three-fourths down.
Fold it halfway down and you'll look dangerous.
Angry, rabid, booming at the mouth, ready to take out as many people as you can.
And all the way down and you'll look intimidating, extreme, looking for any reason to pull out a weapon.
And careful, don't fold it a quarter way down and you might look oppressed. And so the fabric, if you're a job has depressed your inner voice, we see your scarf and ignore the rest, but I digress.
Oh honey, we are forced to wear that at gunpoint?
Do you have a bomb under there?
Day three. I'll try grabbing it from the top and holding it behind my head.
Not the front.
Someone can mistake it for a burka.
Like the mistake the DMV made when they said, "Miss, take it off."
Day four. Well, what if I take both ends and wind them together with a safety pin?
Will that make us safe again?
If it's too loose, the ugly side might show.
Hello, I'm not invisible.
She should've just pinned it to her scalp.
Excuse me?
Didn't she see the no hat sign?
It's not fair that she doesn't have to follow the rules.
I mean, it's just for everyone's safety, right? She needs to take it off.
Day five. I tucked into the fabric under the bun, hoping today's finally the day I get it right.
Make sure to eliminate all folds of misunderstanding.
If you want to be accepted.
Then you just need to let it hang. Like a nun's habit.
Or Jewish woman's shadal.
Maybe an Amish bonnet.
Eeeehhh! Day six. At the airport.
Quick, get down!
At the DMV!
She's got a bomb!
At school!
Please don't hurt her!
Enough! Which twist made me a terrorist?
The same fold that made you voiceless.
The same crease that made you dangerous.
The same wrapping that made you oppressed.
The truth is, none of these versions will be seen as right. There's no way to eliminate.
Stereotypes.
Xenophobia.
Fear.
So why am I trying? Day seven. Realize.
These steps don't work.
Realize.
Your identity doesn't depend on others' opinion of you.
Realize.
You don't have to hide yourself for the comfort of others.
Realize. That there's only one thing you can do. Day one. Wake up. Look at yourself in the mirror and put your scarf on. It doesn't matter if the ugly side shows.
Thank you all so much for coming and performing that for us. I think that was amazing. Do any board members have questions? Or feedback for them? I know you guys were so quick to go over and sit down. Mr. Snow.
I don't know, we've never done this before, so.
So I just have one question. Could you just tell me about how you guys came up with the idea and your practice? I mean, I'm excited.
Well, yeah, it started out as an individual poem for me and basically just showing how there's really no way of folding it and not being perceived as a terrorist. So that's how it all began and eventually grew into a group poem.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Mrs. Ryan.
First, I just want to say thank you and I think it's ama-- I don't really have a question, I just have comments. I just think it's amazing that you guys chose to do this, especially when, as far as I'm aware and can tell, that only one of you is a practicing Muslim and one of you is the one that covers. But the three of you also decided to do this as a group and show solidarity and that you believe in what your classmate has to say and that you guys have witnessed these things as well as people in the background. So, thank you for doing that and I think that's something that's very important and that we need more students who have those type of experiences to be able to come out and say that, so, thank you.
Mrs. Gadding.
Great job and great job to your coaches as well for working with you and helping you and congratulations on winning the mid-- no, Great Plains.
Great Plains.
Great Plains, sorry, we messed up, I messed up earlier. So the Great Plains Championship, that's pretty awesome and you're all very talented, so enjoy the last two weeks of your high school experience here coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and if y'all could come around, I think we'd like to shake hands and congratulate you. And while we're getting situated, a fun fact that was just shared with me was that of the four teams that were competing, obviously Burke won, but one of the other teams was the team from North High. So half of the teams in the regional competition were from OPS, which is pretty amazing, I think, and speaks well to our students and their talent and the work that they do. We will then move on to Board and Superintendent Communications and first up is Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd just like to mention, since we did have Burke High here just now, on Thursday of this coming week, we have community and staff interviews. There are three finalists for that position and everyone's invited. It'll be in the auditorium at Burke High on Thursday. Start time, I believe, is 5:00. I'll double-check on that and get that information to you. Mr. Wakefield, Ms. Cohen, 4:00. So it starts at 4:00 because we've got a fairly long evening with three different candidates that will be meeting the staff, the teachers, community, and will not only have a brief presentation from the three finalists, but they'll also have an opportunity to give input. There'll be input sheets that'll be handed out and opportunities for the finalists to answer questions, too. So I wanted to start with that and then just move to a couple of comments. This time of year is probably the favorite time of year for most of us here. We get to be a part of graduation ceremonies, we get to be a part of recognition activities. I know that last week I was at one for P4K, another for Elementary Excellence Awards, also Fontanelle Forest Fundraiser, and I know that many of our board members also give up their evenings. I know that I saw Luann, Ms. Gadding, Mr. Scanlon, Ms. Williams, Dr. Holman, I saw all of them in the last few nights and I know that all of us on the Board or at the Board Table will be spending time at some really neat events. So thanks to all of you for giving up your evenings for what is really enjoyable, to see the great young people that we have in this district. I also wanted to mention that we've got early indicators of our NESA scores, that's the state assessment that's given every year to every school district across the state of Nebraska. Early indicators look good, we won't know anything final for another month and a half, two months, but right now things look pretty good, so I just wanted to point that out. Also a reminder, June 5th is our bond workshop. We have that on the calendar, which would be something that community could participate in. And I also wanted to hand out, these are some brief flyers that Ms. Farmer and Communications Staff put together that really are a nice, quick look at where we're at two and a half years later, which is essentially where we're at on our bond issue. We're two and a half years into it and I think it's really powerful that we continue to remind the public which projects are done, which aren't, and these are available to the public for any of you that are interested. The good news is, as you look at the projects outlined in this brief summary, we are on time, we are on budget, and feeling very good about the progress we've made and, in fact, we're right now knee-deep in the planning of moving Lothrup and Franklin out of the Mills Building, back into their beautifully renovated sites, and we're about eight months away from moving Bell Ryan and Western Hills into beautiful, beautiful new buildings. So, lots of work going on, I think that's a nice document, it is on our website, but I wanted to mention it publicly. I also wanted to mention that we haven't scheduled the date yet, but we'll soon have a workshop scheduled with the Board that would be open to the public on busing and the student assignment plan. We have worked through mock routing and we're working not only with STA, the private contractor, but the transportation staff is working diligently to make sure, one, we have enough bus drivers, two, that we figure out the student assignment plan in a way that's effective, recognizing that it is going to be a big shift in our school district. Also, just a quick note, June 1st is the Druid Hill presentation to Nebraska Department of Education, where we find out whether or not the State Department wants us to take additional actions, or whether or not they keep us at the same place that we are today, or whether they remove Druid Hill from a priority status. I can't thank the teachers, the administrators at Druid Hill enough, and the community that's worked with them. We've shown incredible growth and it is my belief that if we don't get taken off priority status, it's likely that we'll certainly not be asked to take on anything additional in regard to that. And finally, just a note that we are having a Principals Institute, a Principals Retreat on June 1st and 2nd, and we'd love to have Board members, if you could attend, on the 2nd of June. We'd love to have you participate and share with our principals on June 1st and 2nd. I'll send you another reminder of that, but I wanted to mention that publicly, that we don't stop just because the school year ends, we have retreats for staff that continue their growth and learning throughout the year. And I guess the last piece, I would, on a personal note, just thank the Board for their confidence in last Board meeting and I appreciate some of the things that were voted on and the desire to push the reset button is obvious and clearly we're going to move ahead and we're going to make progress and I think that's in front of us and we'll find a certified, qualified candidate within the next five, six, seven months and I am confident that we'll move and transition very smoothly and that whoever the Board looks at will meet all the requirements of the State Department, which I've had to meet as a superintendent here. So, with that, Madam President, thank you.
All right, we will move on to Board Member Reports. Are there any Board Members that have reports they would like to give? Mrs. Gadding.
As Mr. Evans mentioned, Matt and I were able to attend, and I know the schools, the Omaha Schools Foundation was there as well, Saturday night, the Fontanelle Forest Fundraiser, and I just want to just do a public thank you to Fontanelle Forest for everything that they do in providing education to our kids. They give so many opportunities for science instruction and specifically at the 5th grade level to our students and the Education Director there is a parent in OPS and has just done a phenomenal job working with our teachers and working with our students. So, I'm always grateful when the community reaches out and gives because so much of the fundraising that takes place is actually going toward Omaha Public Schools students and so I'm very grateful for that and very thankful for the support in the community.
Mr. Pearlman.
Just briefly, I was able to attend the Louder Than a Bomb Poetry Slam last Thursday and I also want to acknowledge, as you did a moment ago, the North Team was excellent, too. There were two other schools, Westside and Scott, they were amazing as well, but kudos to all the students who were there, they were all rooting for each other. It was not so much a competition, but really a collaboration with all the schools, so it was great to see.
Dr. Holman.
As Mr. Evans has already stated, some of us had the pleasure of attending the Partnership for Kids 2017 Ceremony, recognizing students that are high school seniors that were graduating this year, as well as individuals that participated in the program who are graduating from college. And it was such an admirable event, it's just so nice to be in the environment, such in a positive environment where young people are demonstrating their growth and their intelligence and everything that they have to offer. And they were so excited about the opportunities that they have been provided and afforded through the Partnership for Kids Program. Some of them won individual scholarships that they'll be able to use for higher education. There was a young lady who has been in the program for several years and will now be graduating from college and moving on to work on her doctorate degree. So, it was just a very exciting event and got to meet a lot of intelligent, young, inspiring youth that we are just so very proud of and also congratulations to all the other seniors who will be graduating this year as well.
Ms. Williams.
Well, I would be remiss to not talk about P4K, so I'm taking a professional and personal moment of privilege. So the young lady, her name is Rema, and she actually, we, there was an article in the World Herald about her today, so if you have the opportunity, read that. She's phenomenal, she talked about when she came here, she knew two words, "high" and "by," and now she is actually going to Chicago to study optometry. So, just, she had an amazing story and it is a privilege and an honor to work at Partnership for Kids, but actually yesterday I was there as a parent. My daughter is graduating and has been a part of P4K since she's been in the 2nd grade, so just amazing work and I want to thank my organization and all the staff there because they really love the students at OPS. We serve 5,400 students in 22 buildings and I want to thank Shavana, Mr. Evans, and all of the principals. Mr. Wagner was there, so your first big hurrah with us. Mr. Haynes, just, we had a lot of great administration there and principals, really recognizing our young people, so just wanted to thank all of our staff for that and all those buildings as well because being in 22 buildings, you know, there's a lot that happens in those buildings, so 12 elementary schools, five middle, five high school. Again, just, it's a great opportunity and we serve OPS exclusively. So it's a great opportunity for me to serve our district in dual capacities, to have a direct influence in the lives of 5,400 students amongst the 52,000 students that we serve, so just wanted to shout out P4K. Thank you.
Anyone else? I will just say, if you haven't seen in your email today, Mr. Ray did send out a updated scheduling request regarding availability in the next couple of months for some Board Training, and so if you haven't had an opportunity to respond to that, if you could do that fairly quickly, that would be appreciated. Mr. Ray, do you have any public comment forms?
No.
Okay, we will move on then to Consent Agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So move.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Mrs. Gadding. Are there any abstentions for consent agenda items? Mr. Pearlman.
I'll be abstaining from item I-11.
Okay, Dr. Holman.
I will be doing the same thing.
Okay, any other abstentions? Okay. So we have Mr. Pearlman and Dr. Holman abstaining from item I-11. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Palermo.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Nine, nine.
Motion carries. Mr. Evans, I believe you wanted to...
Yes, Madam President. I wanted to take this opportunity, on the consent agenda was the approval of two administrative positions and we have in front of me, Mr. Yano Jones, who's going to be the new Assistant Principal at Standing Bear. Yano, just wave at the crowd, we're anxious to have Yano with us. We felt fortunate to get him back from Lincoln, where he'd served as an assistant there, and so we're glad to have you back in OPS. And to my left, I wanted to introduce to the crowd, Mr. Tom Wagner, who is the new Principal of Benson High School. So, thank you for joining our ranks and again, on Thursday, we'll be interviewing finalists for Burke High and we'll have that individual, whoever of, by the way, some really quality individuals, we'll have that person in our next Board meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
No problem, and congratulations to our new administrators. We will now move on to information items and first up is item J1A, an update on the new high school design process.
Good evening, as always, thanks for having us tonight. Put together a presentation this evening, really to kind of remind everyone of the process that we go through on a whole design effort. I know for some new Board Members, it's, some of this is new process, but wanted to take a brief moment to update the Board on really what our energy has been focused on regarding the conceptual design of two new high schools. And we'll walk through this presentation here. Just a quick look back from a historic perspective, when pre-bond planning was happening in the 2014 timeframe, there was some needs identified regarding a new high school. One of those locations was in the northwest area, one of those locations was in the southeast area. So, as part of the facilities capital plan that was put together for the 2014 program, those two components were identified, but at that time, the decision was to fund all the site acquisition necessary for those two sites and the conceptual design of those project as well, and we're going to talk a little bit about that as we get a little further in here. What was also identified in that facility plan was what was referred to as Phase 2, which would provide full funding of those projects, the full design effort, and then the full construction of those sites as well. Again, just from a process perspective, we're following the district standard process, which really includes the architectural selection. The Board approved that back in November and since that time, we've really been working through the rest of the components of the process, which includes the Educational Specializations Committee, a space planning effort, and again, we're going to talk a little bit more about the details of these, and then the conceptual design. And when we talk about conceptual design, it's going to be similar to some of the schematic designs that have come before the Board. That's going to show layout, general spacing of the building, adjacencies within the building. It's also going to show exterior elevation, some renderings to identify maybe the number of stories, and just perspective on what the building would look like. And then as far as the site configuration, the conceptual design will show placement of the building on the site, how it's accessed, where its parking lots are, what fields might be included, and an overall flow of the entire site. So those are the deliverables, if you will, that the design teams are working towards regarding the conceptual design. One of the things that we've been spending a lot of time focusing in on is the concept of a 21st century school and 21st century classrooms. So, a lot of the discussion is really focused on the student experience that they're going to have in these spaces, not necessarily the traditional rectangular-shaped teaching wall and seating. Of course, we want the spaces to, and the building to be very secure, that's always a primary driver of facility design and layout, but the real focus is, is how do we generate more collaboration among students? How do we build a facility and an infrastructure that's going to support project-based learning? How do we make sure that it's adaptable and it allows for different uses of the same space? So from a square footage perspective, we can get more efficient use out of the building and you can see from the images just on the right-hand side, all of the furniture in the space is really the same furniture, it's just simply moved around and can accommodate, again, different subject matter, a different methodology of delivering the curriculum, and it really provides the maximum flexibility for the space. From a programming perspective, again, we've identified a core team, which is really made up of several principals, the Director of Secondary Education, the design firms that are helping on the effort, Buildings and Ground Representatives, and then, of course, some team members from the Jacobs Team. Educational specification committee is largely, are very, very similar to all the other special groups that we put together. They have core team components and then they also have parents and teachers. We have had a lot of opportunity to interact with students and do some visual listening and then we also have been able to bring in each curriculum specialist inside of their own space, whether that's science, or business, or art, and then inside of the arts, is it drama, is it music, et cetera. And then the other, of course, important component of all these discussions is, we've had several discussions in the community, trying to get a broader perspective of what are their expectations of the facilities, what type of programming are they hearing about? of programming are they, are they hearing about and wanting to ensure that we're considering, again, as we identify square footage inside of the facility? Just moving on to space programming, some of the spaces that we're talking about, again, there's some, some trend of moving away from a classroom and really creating the studio space where, you know, the STEM and STEAM type of activities can really flourish, really flexible spaces, again, multiple monitors. We're not just at the chalkboard anymore writing down, you know, a lot of arithmetic and go, go answer that. Science spaces, you can see some of those detailed there. We're, we've had a lot of discussion about the technical sciences, how they dovetail into career exploration, what types of spaces those would look like, family consumer science, you see that, business, art, music, performing arts. Again, a lot of these are programs that the district currently offers. Just want to make sure everyone here understands, we're really considering every component inside of the curriculum spectrum right now. Physical education and, and the athletics components, looking at alternative curriculum, what, what might that look like in the future and how is it supported? The counseling and guidance center, where that's going to be placed in the building. And there's been a lot of discussion about, do we have these components that are centralized, or do we decentralize some of them and put them where the students are? So maybe the guidance center, there is, there is a main hub, but then there's several areas throughout the building where, again, students can access them much easier. So testing some different layout ideas, just in, really in, in discussion and space planning at this point in time. Of course, media center. And as, you know, we look 30 years from now, books, how many volumes of books are we going to have? How does that really interact with technology and, and really the, the smart devices that these, these kiddos here will largely depend on? Of course, another consideration is the staff areas, administration, the workroom, where's security, the health aspect of it. Again, looking at a centralized administration, or does it make sense to have maybe one core component and then some smaller breakout spaces? Again, where, where do we put these to, to be the most impactful for that student experience as the center? Really working through the logic of teaching planning centers versus every teacher kind of going back to their room and doing their planning individually, really focusing that in on to allow them to collaborate in spaces, whether that's departmentally or from a grade perspective, but really looking at making those rooms flexible and utilized at a much higher rate by allowing teachers to come out of them and plan in their own centers with their peers. So a lot of good discussion around that. And of course, in order for the facility to be maintained and continue to have a long life, we need to make sure we're planning for proper building services, storage, mechanical spaces, et cetera. Again, just wanted to, just take a few minutes and, and really update the board on that process that we're going through. Our next steps are really to continue the programming effort with the, the groups that I mentioned, develop an actual conceptual design that ultimately will come before the board for approval, and that will be a visual of what those buildings would look like. And then just to echo what Mr. Evans had mentioned, really work on the specific details of, of not only these new high schools, but maybe a broader Phase Two plan, if you will, at a board workshop where we can really provide you with all the demographic information as far as enrollments, where we can dive into the science spaces specific. And if you have specific questions about curriculum, we'll have all of those experts from within the district there to answer those specifics. So tonight, again, was just to make sure everybody knows we're working on it. We have been working on it. And we're really coming to the point where we need some board feedback on what, what, what components of the program do we need to push forward? What other program components should we look at? That's really what this evening's update was for.
Thank you. To give the board a heads up, kind of in line with what Mark just said, we are going to follow the process. We've used some previous summers where we still have our two meetings, but one of those meetings is actually kind of a mini-meeting where we do claims and any other necessary work. And then we do an in-depth board workshop on a specific topic. And so Bond and Construction will be one of those workshops that happens over the summer. And when that schedule is finalized, we'll be getting that out to all of you. Are there board questions? Mr. Scanlon?
Question that came up when we were having a public, I guess, interaction forum with the, with some parents out at Burke High School. And the question that come up, will these new high schools that are being planned, will there be like testing, soil samples, all of that done in this phase? Or is that, what is the plan for that as far as some of the preliminary stuff that can be done?
Sure, geotechnical studies, we're, we're working on that now. And that's going to be a big factor, of course, at, at a Greenfield site or at the 60th and L Street site where it's been used for many different purposes. So we've asked the design firms to, to move forward on that with the engineering to do that type of testing. Because that can significantly impact the timeframe, too. If you need to prepare the soil a different way to hold a different type of structure. So we, we are moving forward with that in this conceptual phase.
I've also been asked what, with what's in this first phase of the bond, how, I mean, how much does that contribute to the acceleration of the schedule to where, when, when and if a second phase of the bond is passed by voters, what's the time from that, the, or the bond approval being passed to when we can start breaking ground and, you know, moving forward with the actual construction?
To, to, I would say to get a, from the conceptual design to a full construction document phase, you're looking at about a year. Significant size of facilities and a lot of, a lot of details, if you will, inside of those. There is some opportunity, I would say, what they would call is fast track. And you, you do a site package maybe upfront. And then that'll really clear the way for, as drawings are developed, do the footing package and then come out of the ground with steel. So there are some opportunities. We'd have to study that a little bit closer, depending on the type of structure the engineers are designing around. That can factor into the timetable quite a bit if there's a lot of concrete. Maybe it's not great for the winter time. We need to look at a steel structure. So part of that really depends on the information we get back from you as a board on the, on, at the workshop of, of what is the timeline? What do we need to look at for building efficiency? Again, what are those, those larger objectives you have? And then we can work with the other experts and, and try to deliver a program that meets that request.
Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Mr. Summers. This is a shorter presentation than your previous ones.
I'm, I am trying. I am trying.
We are all trying. Teamwork. So a quick question, actually two. Do you know dates of the next meetings for the space programming?
I do not. I do not. What we're really, we're really working towards right now is we've, we've come up with draft program, if you will. So, so we kind of do an internal vetting of that, again, trying to make sure all the spaces are accounted for. But ultimately, really, the, the next significant conversation would be a workshop where we could present this, again, kind of conceptual or draft program, making sure all the spaces and your folks' mind are accounted for. Then we can identify overall mass of the building, look at potential range of dollars. And then to Mr. Scanlon's question, here's kind of some different timelines. If you start here and you get in the ground before the winter flies, you know, you're in a much better position on the other side. And so again, it really, we need to get that programming in front of you folks and really be able to dive into the intricacies of it.
And my follow-up question is, how long, when do you think you'll have a conceptual design?
The, the initial target was the first board meeting in June.
First board, I'm just want to make sure that if that's the case, we're still on.
Yep. No, that would be the first board meeting in June. But if you're not really taking action items, we look for that second, second meeting in June opportunity. And again, part of that is, we need some direction from the board before we put something conceptually together. And you say, wait, wait a second, did we make sure this was there? Oh, let's erase and kind of go back. So try and do sequence all of these discussions and make sure that the conceptual design, again, make, you know, is in line with the board as a whole. And then ultimately, we want to use that as, as a, as a communication to, to the community of, you know, this is the, the type of building and, and spaces that we're talking about for, you know, zero to the next 80 years. So.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Gadding?
I know we've talked about the conceptual design coming sometime in June. So one of the things that I had asked when the architects met with community members at Davis to talk about the conceptual design, is could we have a meeting in May prior to you all bringing it to the board, where there's one more opportunity for the community to be together? And if someone could work on the date of that soon so that we can get that communicated out well through the communications department? I think that elementary and the middle schools out there really want to be a part of at least letting parents know and having the opportunity to get a sense for what it looks like. So I think that would be helpful if you could do that for us. We'd appreciate it. And then if you can just let probably Matt know when that date is so that he can get it out to the whole board, that'd be awesome. And I'm, I'm assuming maybe 60th and L. And I don't know exactly where that was, but I know that was one of the things I asked specifically for the Northwest site. The other thing that I guess I would just ask is, as we think about soil studies and what work would have to be done, I know that one of the questions that came up was the packing of the soil. Is it, and I'm not using the correct...
Backfilling, yeah.
Backfilling and that sort of thing. So if there's some of that work that needs to be done, could you also be informing especially board officers of that? Because that sometimes takes nine months to a year, right? And so I think we want to be able to make sure that we're not losing ground in the process and that we get that information in front of the board as soon as possible. Because I think that backfilling is probably going to be critical at both sites potentially and, and can have a significant impact on timing. So I would just appreciate it if you could bring back to the board...
Absolutely.
Those, those two kind of timing items. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Mr. Pearlman?
I just have a couple of questions. I know you briefly went over, it looks like on page six of the PowerPoint. Could you, since I've never been through this before, just to give me a better understanding of just the baseline, who are the participants in that, in that programming? And how big of a team are we talking? Four, six, 12? And, and how often do they get together?
Sure, sure. So, so the core team, again, is, is, so at, at these sites, there is no building principal. Typically, that, that individual is kind of the center of, of all of these conversations. And in this case, we were lucky enough to have a Northwest principal and Burke's principal help us on the 156 and Ida Street site. And then the South principal and the Bryan principal help us on the 60th and L Street site. But they're typically really a center part of this. They, they really know their communities. They understand how to communicate the most effectively to those folks. But ultimately, the core team, director of secondary ed, buildings and grounds, those principals that I mentioned, are, are team members. And then the design firm, design firms, in this case, with the two different sites. And for the most part, I would say every two weeks for a meeting. In, in the initial stages of the process, it's really more, little more visionary. What, what are we really trying to, trying to get to? And we, we didn't talk about bricks and mortar. We talked about student experience and the achievement that we want the facilities to drive. And then ultimately, the educational specification are those same, same individuals. So the core teams, probably 10 to 12 folks, a little bigger than normal, again, just because of the, the importance, I guess, from the size of all the facility. Educational specification is, that's where the parents, teachers, other staff members would, would become involved. And so that would grow to 15 to 18, again, depending. And some of these discussions, there's 20, 22 different folks depending on, that's really the group that we bring the curriculum specialists into. So we can hear the parents' perspective on, again, on art, or on music, or on band, or on drama, as well as the secondary ed's perspective. It, it's important to do that all in the same room and that good transparent discussion. And then we also try to provide opportunities in those same types of meetings for students. And then for one example, we had a meeting out at Northwest and had about 15 students, about 50/50 from Northwest and Burke, and really did visual listening. And what that, that really is, is all these different images of design. And there's a green dot if you like it, and a red dot if you don't. And really just let the kids kind of identify these types of spaces really, that, for us, that's where it, you know, and from the adult perspective, it's trying to understand. And one of the things that really came out of that is their connection to nature. Most of the photos that had some outdoor connection, lots of green dots. The ones that didn't, there were red dots. So that's where the students come in. And then on the community pers, side of it, there's really two pieces. One, there are several parents or community members that are on the ed-spec committee. So they're meeting with us regularly. And then once a month or once every six weeks, again, depending on the, the schedule of the project, we try to get out into the community from a broader perspective and say, okay, here's what we've been working on. Here's where the groups are thinking about, you know, emphasis on this piece of programming or that. What's the, what's the broader input from the, from the community? And there's two parts of the community. It's the students that are going to make up the building, and then the neighbors. You know, what are the neighbors? And there was a lot, you know, questions of where's the fence going to be? Is it, is it going to go in my yard? Or can I plant trees in your guys', all kinds of other questions related to the sites from the neighbors. But that's kind of the broader look of all the groups involved in the discussions around these, these projects right now.
Thanks. My only other question is, are, are these sorts of things already taking place for the, what may be a, a new middle school and, and elementary schools in South Omaha? There's just focus on the high schools right now.
Right now, it's just focused on the high school because conceptual design is part of the 2014 program. There has been, I think, some brief looks at the gateway site, how a new middle school might fit on there just at a high level, just as student assignment plan and other factors are going to influence the size of that, size of that building, knowing the influx of students at the middle school level. So very, very preliminarily, but the large efforts really on the high schools at this point.
Just a follow-up. We have done elementary ed specs on Bell Ryan and Western Hills on those two, two new schools. We did go through that process.
Thank you.
Sure. I guess my, my question would be related to some comments Mrs. Gadding has made. Because I know the Northwest High School site has received probably more, more publicity and more information out there than 60th and L. But are those two timelines fairly close together as far as meetings that have happened and process getting towards that conceptual design?
I would, I would say they're paralleled, and not only from a timeline perspective too, but from the planning effort. We're, we're making sure, we're having parity discussions and, you know, maybe a health clinic is necessary out here, but not out here. But it's important for us to understand why those are. Because if there are questions about, hey, there's, there's 5,000 square foot difference, what is that all about? Help us understand. So we're trying to make sure that those, again, at the space planning level, we're, we're researching those aspects of it. But from a timing element, they're really, really right now on the same exact path. So when the programming's done for one, we're, we're really running them in unison.
Okay. Any other board questions or comments? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll look forward to seeing you back for our board workshop. We will move on to item J-1B, which is information on recommended student code of conduct changes for the 2017, 2018 school year.
I wasn't going to use either, but they had them on there then.
Thank you.
Perfect. You should have received two. First of all, I'm Terri Sikora. I'm the administrator of the Office of Community, School and Family Engagement. Thank you for taking the time to let me speak with you today. You should have received two documents. One is the code of conduct revisions based specifically on the code. And you'll see strike-throughs and red lettering, or the new improved things in red, the suggested things, and then a list of all the revisions. So currently, what we have pulled up is the list, which is great because that's kind of how I highlighted today's topic for the information. I know that this is an informational meeting, but there are specific things that I wanted you to be aware of, the new revisions or the new things that were suggested by several different groups. One of the groups that helps with the revision is our Code of Conduct Committee. And that includes eight secondary administrators, which include principals, assistant principals, dean of students, and SSLs. We had five elementary administrators, which included principals, assistant principals, and SSLs. Three, alternative education, which included program director and assistant program directors, as well as three TAC administrators that work very closely with schools when they're implementing the code in schools. Also throughout the year, I take notes. I have one code of conduct that is kind of my working document. So whenever I have a staff member that calls me to say, how does this, how, how should I implement the code? Or this doesn't make sense to me. So I can mark it in there to say, we need to make this easier to understand. Or the same when a parent contacts us and says, I don't get what the code's trying to say here. That's obviously something we need to, to address and to strategize, to, to word it differently. So a lot of the things that we revise not only came from the committee and the year-long process of that, but it also possibly came from like a hearing process wherein the hearing appeal, things came up. And so we wanted to capture all of that and try to continue to revise this so that way we can have it be the best code out there. Also got input from department heads here at the TAC building when it came to things specifically like athletics or transportation. Also had some input specifically from building principals that have now fifth and sixth graders in their middle school, how we wanted to make sure we worded that so that way it was clearly defined. We received input from a student group, the Omaha Student Voice Council, as well as parent groups, district citizen advisory committee. And most recently, we presented this to the board of the Code of Conduct Committee for the board. And that was April 24th, where we had three board members. I believe there was five TAC administrators. 24th, where we had three board members, I believe there was five tack administrative present, as well as three building teachers or instructional facilitators that were there as well. So with that, I kind of went through the list of the key ones, and I tried to highlight those on the list also with a red blurb that says new addition. So if you see on number 22, adding to the list of violations, a new category called reckless behavior, which is already in there, but to define it where we would have a reckless behavior as well as a reckless behavior resulting in personal injuries. So that way, you'd have two specific things. So I'm highlighting that as a change that you may want to take closer lookout. And then number 29 through 31, this I spoke about, the principals that were helping better come up with verbiage to clearly define the expectations of those fifth and sixth graders that are in the middle school, as well as the K through sixth grade that are still in elementary. Speaking specifically to any student, whether they're in elementary school or middle school, cannot be expelled if they're K through six, but there is the option of a sixth grade reassignment to a alternative program within OPS. So just to really clearly define those things when it came to exclusion at the elementary level, one thing I found too is that confused parents when you had exclusion, they thought their kids were getting expelled, and so to change that word exclusion specifically to suspension. And then moving the expulsion from, to its own category in the list of resolutions, and defining that specifically when it spoke about K6 and then 5, 6 students, even if they're in a middle school level building, they cannot be expelled. The next thing I would like to highlight is number 45. I guess I should have explained that all of these other pieces in there are, they're less, I guess more simple revisions, so it could have been a grammatical error that needed to be updated, or maybe it was formatting to better understand it, or clarification of what it means. So I'm not skipping them because they're not important, please take a look at them, but I just really wanted to highlight the ones that are additions, suggested additions to the code. So at 45, at the Level 4, there was two suggested violations to add, one was assault to staff, and number 46 is injury to a staff member attempting to intervene when preventing or breaking up a fight. You'll find the definition for assault to staff on page 28 in the code, and then also on page 29 is the injury to a staff member attempting to intervene when preventing or breaking up a fight. So those are two new suggestions to be added. Next is 49, this was suggestion from Travis Salas as to help better define bus misconduct, so that way there was more of a understanding district-wide as to what bus misconduct is. And you'll see bullet points on page 21 of the Code of Conduct, specific to safety guidelines for transportation students, and then a breakout for Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, and Level 4 resolutions when it came to the safety guidelines. However, it would show that at the bottom, if there was an assault per se that took place on the bus, it would still be coded as an assault and would have a resolution of an assault. This is just to help specifically with bus misconduct. The next one is number 61. I just saw something. Oh, we talked about reckless behavior, okay. Overnight suspension. To clearly define what overnight suspension, that is one of the dropdowns that we currently utilize in the Behavior Management tab, but it's not defined in the Code of Conduct, so it was suggested to have that put out there, so that way it was clearly defined. Next is 74. 74 is at the addition of the student signature of receipt of school rules, that is something that every student signs at the beginning of the school year, once they receive the handbook, and the schools go through a training with students. At the elementary level, it is a signature by the parent that states that they've received the Code of Conduct, they understand that the student will follow the rules of the Code of Conduct, they'll work with their families or whatever, work with their students, and their signature says just that, it's a signature of receipt of the school rules. As well, then in the middle school and high school or secondary level, it's an actual signature by the student to say, I received the school rules, I understand the school rules, I'll follow the school rules. And I think those are the big highlights that I guess I want to make sure that you capture just tonight for the informational meeting. The next steps is continuing to work with the OEA president to discuss next steps and referencing to gather a more additional teacher input, and then asking to bring the suggested revisions to the next board meeting for the first reading. Any, yeah?
Mr. Snow?
Was I the first?
I think so.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have a couple of questions, just some clarification, but the number 56, page 29, which is probably page eight of the slide, 56? 56. Injury of a staff member attempted to intervene to prevent a breakup of fight. With that change in there, is current staff in OPS going to receive additional training on how to break up fights or intervene?
That has not been discussed, is additional training?
Just a food for thought, for next time if it's not. I think they get something that needs to happen if we're going to require, or obviously a staff person, they love their district, they're going to want to intervene and break up a fight, but if they're not properly trained or have not gone through retraining, I think that's something that could help them, as well as help that student as well. My next question was the, just wording on the parent for the overnight suspension, I didn't really notice until you talked about it. Until the parent comes to the school, could that be a guardian as well? Does that have to be?
Yes. I can add that.
Because some of the students, all right. And that could possibly be throughout the entire thing, so I hope I'm not increasing the cost of the book there.
No. We need to add it if it's not there, so if you catch it, please let me know, and I will definitely get that added.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gadding? Well, I appreciated the wording that was added for bus conduct, and I lost the page here where it was at, but I attended at the National School Board Association Conference a session on conduct on school buses, and I know I sent the information off to Legal, so they have that. But I think many of the things that were noted in here were also done by this particular school district in a video series.
Yes.
Based on the grade level of the students, and showing that first week of school very, very intensely. And then the other thing that this district did that I thought was really impactful was when there was a problem with conduct on the bus, at the elementary level, the principal would have a bus brought to school over the lunch hour, and then he would take all the students out, and they would do reenactments of how to behave properly, while everyone else was at recess, of course, but it helped to quickly deter inappropriate behavior on the buses. And just knowing that we all get emails throughout, especially at that beginning part of the year, on bus conduct, and people who are following buses, and maybe even the media taking pictures, I think it'd be great if we can do more of that, and I know that Mrs. Savoy is, I know that Legal is working on it, and so I'm just looking forward to you all working really well together, and if there's anything missing in the Code of Conduct that we get that added in through this process before it comes back to us for that first reading.
I will speak with Legal, and I also want to note that at the board committee meeting, we had a teacher that suggested the same thing with the videos, and also to make sure that the videos were in several different languages. And so I thought that was really neat, so that has been passed on to Travis Salas as a possible support, so.
And in that particular district, they had the kids do the videos from school, you know, from different schools, so it was very impactful, because they said the kids are watching themselves and their friends and other people that would be their peers, telling them to get on the bus safely and to sit down and not to yell and throw things out the window and all that kind of stuff.
That's good.
So anyway, I appreciated very much some of the things that that particular district did, so they're smaller than we are, but next year, we may have very full buses, and so we're going to need to be really thoughtful, that if we're putting more students on a bus than just a few through the new student assignment plan, if we've got 40 to 50 kids on a bus, we're going to need to be really thoughtful about the training and the approach that we take prior to the school year starting.
Thank you.
Mr. Perlman?
Yes, this just kind of popped in my head, I think the, I mean, I could be wrong, but I think probably the most dramatic change is going to be the cell phone use policies for the students. Is there anything planned to kind of get that message out, other than just kind of the traditional ways? I mean, any suggestions on that front?
Specific to the personal cell phone use?
Right. I mean, I suppose it'll be up to the building administrators, make it clear.
Well, and I guess maybe I'm missing it, but the change of policy is more so specific to like BYOD schools, BYOD?
Okay. I thought there was going to be a revision to just video, using video and pictures.
I guess you'll have to.
But I'll review that and address that another time. I'll find that specific one.
Thank you.
Sure.
No, and I feel bad that I'm.
Mr. Snow?
Do you have a question?
Thank you, just a quick question. For clarification at the end, did you say OEA was part of this first reading, or will be part of the next reading?
So I'll be working with the OEA president to meet with several of the teachers, to get more teacher input. We received teacher input from the board committee, but we're going to work with the board president to be able to get more.
So not part of this one, but the next one?
So whatever suggestions or revisions that they may possibly have, I'll add it for the first reading, and I'll provide that information to Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
And I'll note, I'll note in a different color maybe, if there's an additional change, so that way you can see the difference between these revisions and the additional suggested revisions.
Thanks.
Mr. Snow?
So I forgot my last question, but Gadding was talking about the levels for the safety guidelines for transportation. This goes back into training, if we're going to be adding it into the code, are the bus drivers going to receive additional training on how to speak to students, how to follow this? Because obviously, you hear all the different things that could come through, but is there going to be additional training provided for them, so they're better prepared, as well as, obviously, I love that video suggestion, to better prepare the students, just so both parties know what they're, you know.
Yes.
Getting into.
And I know that there are trainings that do go on with the transportation, but I can definitely pass that along for additional.
I know Dr. Turnquist's in the back of the room, she and Mr. Salas have already engaged internal and external trainers to do exactly what you're talking about, because we are concerned that we're going to move to, from, in some cases today, we're 10, 12, 15 students on a bus, and it's more likely that we're going to be in the high 20s with this new student assignment plan, which is more efficient, but also could provide more opportunities for mischief, that we want to make sure we've set environments that are productive and positive. So I know they're working on that, and we can bring that back later on, what the training is and the videos they're going to make.
I'm sure that we'll probably have that in a workshop or something, but, I mean, the reason why, obviously, I bring it up is, when I was a student and we were acting up on a bus, we had a bus driver that would threaten to turn the bus back around or pull off on the side of the road, and I know that's not in here, but I just want to make sure the bus drivers are prepared when they get this overload of students.
My bus driver made me sit on the steps at the door as he was driving down the road. I like to talk.
Very dangerous.
Yeah, right.
I'm glad you made it this far.
I know, me too. Glad I'm here tonight. Are there any other questions I can answer for you?
Any other questions?
All right.
Okay, we will see you when we get to first reading, and I would ask board members, and Mr. Perlman, you said you were going to follow up on yours, but if you could all just take a look through, look through the changes, look at the full document with the changes, and if you do notice anything, if you could please send that to Mr. Ray, so you can put them all together and forward them on from the board, that would be greatly appreciated. We will move on to item J1C, which is the Common Grading Practices Information Update.
As they're coming up, Madam President, just to note, I'd like to give special thanks to all the teachers and administrators that have served on this committee, including our OEA president, Bridget Donovan. This has been a year and a half of working on the actual changes to our grading practices with multiple iterations that they've gone through, and really have been diligent in trying to figure out best practice and how to implement it. And we have a pilot that now I know they're going to be talking about, next steps with that pilot, and special thanks to CK, who served as the lead on this committee, and you may recall, we had another gentleman that was serving as the lead, and he ended up stepping down, and so we asked CK to step in, and he did a great job, so we appreciate the whole committee. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
It's just a pleasure to introduce this committee to you. It has been a truly collaborative approach. The Common Grading Practices Committee has been a combination of OEA teachers, other teachers, OPS administrators, district communications, the research division, CIS, behind the scenes, Donna Dobson, Susan Christopherson, and our facilitator just mentioned CK, who if you didn't know it, CK is also the assistant principal right now over at Central High School, so he's doing two jobs. I get to see him in the evenings, I think Central sees him during the day, so he gets a little extra boost for doing that. We are able to actually tell you that not only did the committee come to consensus, it's unanimous. You're going to see and hear about why this committee feels that OPS, who has, and we have had, a high standard for achievement, we just field-tested a grading scale, we think it better represents the excellence we demand of our young people. You'll also hear about a new course mark and a communications plan. And the other person I'd like to thank is directly to my right, and invite our president of the OEA, Bridget Donovan, who's been a member of the committee and helped in this collaborative process.
Thank you, Dr. Kerberg. I've been a member of this committee for 35 years, and I have talked to you many times about collaboration and teacher voice and distributed leadership, and it's my pleasure to tell you that this committee had all of these things. From the very, very beginning of this most recent manifestation, we worked, OEA and Dr. Kerberg worked together in picking the committee members and choosing and discussing who would be on this committee and who we needed on this committee. Effort was made to include educators from a variety of areas, including academic and the fine arts, as well as the different levels, middle, elementary, and high school, and educators practicing in the schools, as well as educators here at the tack building. CK has merit in his role as facilitator, continued this commitment to respecting the professionals on this committee. Every educator on this committee had a valued voice. Every educator was treated with due respect and professionalism. Although not everyone agreed at all times with each other, they disagreed as professionals, they made their arguments as equals, regardless of their status within OPS. This committee here before you is the example of how committees can and should work. I highly recommend that this committee be held as the gold standard in future planning. This committee may be held up as an affirmation from the district in their belief of their educators' professional decisions. I cannot more highly recommend a committee than this committee. Thank you.
So we're pretty excited to be here, actually, this is a perfect opportunity for us. We originally were thinking that we were going to get to present to you later in the month, but we were asked to present today, and we couldn't be more excited about it, actually, because it helps us move the wheels forward, keep the project moving, and that's something that we were a little worried about when we were here a year ago. So I would like to say, President America, Vice President Snow, and Board of Education, and Mr. Evans, I mean, it is a true pleasure to be able to serve on this committee. Some really nice things were just said, and I can tell you that this group of people really has an amazing grasp of grading.
really has an amazing grasp of grading and of best practices and research. They talked to their constituents, they spoke to teachers and parents and students. It's pretty amazing what this group of individuals were able to accomplish. I'm very proud of them. If you think about where this committee was just a little over a year ago, we have come a long way and I'm very proud to be a part of that group. I will tell you that we stand here with what we consider a year of productivity under our belts. You're going to hear an update from the teachers, from the administrators, you're going to hear from them today, and it's important that we remember that they represent not just teachers and administrators, but they also represent current student, who have current students, so their parents. They represent parents who are going to have, you know, students coming up into all levels, former students that are part of it. So we really have a pretty amazing group of individuals. And I would really like to also remind you today that we consider ourselves an advisory committee to Mr. Evans, and we believe that Mr. Evans is certainly the one to make this decision. And so what we love is that we have his confidence, we believe we have his confidence, and he has been to many of our meetings and has been very supportive, and that has been a huge, huge benefit for us. And it's nice to be able to say, "Mr. Evans, this is what we think," and to have him say, "Well, let's talk to the board and hear what they have to say," which is very nice. So thank you for that, Mr. Evans. It's kind of a perfect time for us because we were asked about a year ago to field test based on what Dr. Kerberg had said. We sat at a board workshop and the current Board of Education, and Mr. Evans said, "The grading scale that you have laid out in front of us, we need you to take some time and we need you to test it." And that's what we did. And I'm going to have some individuals talk to you about that. It's important that you understand that we chose specific courses for all students across the district to undergo the field test grading scale. We're going to talk about that specifically as well. And we did that specifically because we wanted to be able to look at the data. That was a key component to our work this year. We wanted to look at all the stakeholders, all the data. And so because that was key, we asked Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie, who's the individual who runs research, you know extremely well, he talks to you all the time, but we said, "Give us your best guy," and he gave us Chris Fitch right over here, and he has been a member of our board, and I got to tell you, Chris has really done some amazing things. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris and let him talk to you about the research that we did.
Good evening, everyone. I don't think I've had the privilege of presenting to many of you, so I'm excited to be here tonight. I was brought onto the grading committee last fall, and I was brought on in part to assist with collecting feedback from various stakeholder groups through surveys and focus groups, and that's what I'm going to talk about tonight. As CK stated, the grading committee consists of a diverse group of staff representing numerous buildings and perspectives. And so we already felt like we were getting a lot of different opinions from committee members themselves. However, we wanted as many staff members as possible to have a chance to weigh in on the work of the committee. In this vein, we sent out two surveys in the fall of 2016. The first went to all principals and instructional leaders. The second went to a sample of 326 teachers who were currently teaching a course that was utilizing the field-tested grading scale. Survey responses from principals and members of the elementary and secondary instructional leadership network suggested strong support for a more rigorous grading scale that would more accurately depict the work of students. Teachers also overwhelmingly supported the adoption of the field-tested grading scale. And in fact, we saw lots of comments, like the one you see on the screen over here that reads, "I think students are putting forth more effort than they have previously due to the new grading scale. I strongly support the adoption of the new scale." In addition to comments like that, we also saw a lot of comments from teachers that suggested adding a scoring mark of 1.5 to the secondary proficiency scale. For those of you that aren't aware, the current proficiency scale has marks of 0, 1, 2, 2.5, 3, 3.5, and 4, and those marks represent work that ranges from failing to advanced. A mark of 1.5 was originally omitted from this scale because it represented work that was below basic and staff did not want students to strive for a mark of 1.5. However, teachers have repeatedly indicated that students are at times turning in work that is best represented by a 1.5 on the proficiency scale, and as you'll see coming up, this feedback has not fallen on deaf ears. I'd now like to turn things over to Alan Dappin from North High School, and he's going to tell you a little bit more about how staff in his building are reacting to the field-tested grading scale.
Thank you. I would just like to reiterate from a teacher's perspective what Chris is saying. I've been on this committee all along and everybody at North knows that. In fact, a lot of students, or excuse me, a lot of teachers from other schools know that as well, and they give me a lot of feedback, believe me. And I think all of us on the committee can attest to that, that we're all getting feedback from staff, both staff members who are part of the field test and staff members who are not. And we're hearing two things over and over and over. Staff overwhelmingly says they want a more rigorous grading scale, one that does more accurately represent the grades their students should earn based on what they're learning, and the field test grading scale seems to be one they're looking for. And the second thing is that desire to have a 1.5. When I mark a test, there are many occasions where I'm struggling, is this a 2? Is this a 1? And I'm, a 1.5 would make life much easier for staff, and they're all requesting that. So those two things in particular are the main feedback we're getting from staff, and we're listening.
In addition to hearing from staff, the committee also felt that it was very important to hear from students and parents. And to collect input from students, we held several guided discussions with two different groups. The first was the Omaha Student Voices Council. It consisted of roughly 30 district high school students. The second, the grassroots leadership group, consisted of over 200 students. In both of these instances, students indicated a strong desire for the increased rigor and higher expectations associated with the new grading scale. And we're also hearing a very similar message regarding the new scale from parents. Although we haven't done a formal survey, we did reach out to staff in buildings who regularly discuss grades with parents, and we asked them, "What are you hearing from parents regarding the field-tested grading scale?" And they reported pretty consistently that there had been few concerns regarding the grading scale, and they also reported that parents were saying that they appreciated schools holding their children to higher standards. Going forward, the committee is planning to continue to reach out to parents and collect feedback from them. We have focus groups planned in the near future, and those focus groups will be designed to collect feedback from parents on how best to communicate future changes to the grading scale and grading practices. And now I'm going to turn it over to Tom Wagner. Tom has the interesting perspective of being both a data processor and now a high school principal, and he's going to tell you a little bit more about how students and parents have reacted to the field-tested grading scale.
Good evening. At the, towards the end of the summer, right after the district's put forth its communication of the field-tested grading scale, several buildings, including the one that I was at, we did our own explanation as well, kind of in terms that our respective buildings understand from us as we communicate with them. I got a lot of feedback throughout the semester at Central from both parents and students. Most of it was a misunderstanding in what was actually happening. The biggest misunderstanding was that we were changing up how we were grading things, and that was not the case at all. How things were graded was not changed, it was what happened after things are graded as they have been. It's just put up against a different scale. So we were able to, and I would imagine from what I understand from my colleagues that are data processors at other buildings, they kind of kept the door open for those discussions to take place throughout the year. I had many discussions also with students about the same thing, about what a new scale means and what it doesn't mean. And the biggest thing was, it doesn't mean we're changing how we're grading. We're changing, once things are graded, the scale that it's put up against.
In addition to getting to assist with surveys and focus groups, as a member of research, I also get to assist with reviewing the grading data every quarter. And basically, we've done that as a committee. So every quarter of the past school year, the committee has reviewed grading distributions and all of the courses that we're utilizing the field-tested grading scale. I do want to point out that most of our attention has been focused on semester grades, and that's really simply because those grades are typically a better indication of how students are performing. And that's because at the secondary level, those are the grades that go on the transcript, so students are more likely to turn in all their assignments prior to the end of the semester. And so we've really only had one completed semester since we started field testing the grading scale. So this data is a little bit preliminary, but I do want to talk about what we've seen so far. Essentially, we've seen a shift in the grade distributions in those field-tested courses that is consistent with the increased rigor of the field-tested grading scale. And what I mean by that is that we see slightly fewer As and Bs and more Cs, and so we've pushed some students towards the center of the grading distribution. And I do want to say that that shift is exactly what the grading committee predicted we would see prior to implementing the field-tested grading scale. And the committee feels that the observed shift in the grading distribution is consistent with the belief that the grades on the new scale better reflect students' understanding of course material. Going forward, the committee is planning to continue to review grading distributions every semester. We do want to keep an eye on things. Over time, the committee feels that students will rise the higher standards associated with the field-tested grading scale, thus making our students better prepared for future endeavors. And I'd like to turn things back over to Mr. Wagner again.
Thank you, Mr. Evans and President America. So I get the privilege of kind of formally stating our recommendation, and we have two recommendations to Mr. Evans. First, if you haven't, the first recommendation is that we move forward with the implementation of the field-tested grading scale at the beginning of the 2017 school year. This is what we anticipated when we came to the board last June, and we're basically at a point where we're ready to say what we thought was going to happen, happened, and so it's time to move forward. The second recommendation is the one that came as a result of listening to teacher feedback throughout the process, which is the addition of the 1.5 mark to the proficiency scale that teachers use at the secondary level to mark assignments. There's a slight distinction in the way the proficiency scale is used at the elementary level. They do not use the halves the way the secondary does, so at the elementary level, they use 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. At the secondary level, moving forward- Oh, 4, sorry. 1, 2, 3, 4. And at the secondary level, if this were moved forward, we would begin to use 0, 1, 1.5, 2, 2.5, 3, 3.5, and 4, which would make it a little bit more consistent because it's always been kind of a question teachers have had, why we have halves between 2 and 3, 3 and 4, but not between 1 and 2. The next slide shows the change in the grading scale. So we've talked a lot about the change, and those of you that have hopefully been on the board for a while, this is not new, but some of you are new to the board. And so the field testing scale you can see is on the right. The current scale is on the left, and essentially what we would be doing is consolidating the As and A minuses into one group, the Bs and B minuses into one group, and then balancing out the groups so that each group has a bandwidth of about .75. The bottom group being a little bit bigger. We did that intentionally, setting that mark at 1, because we felt that it kind of aligned well with where the proficiency scale was at.
To take that just a step further, at one of the very first grading committee meetings we had, it was the proficiency scale had a 1, okay, and a 1 on the grading scale to the left is passing. A 1 on the proficiency scale is below basic. And we, as a committee, felt a student receiving scores of below basic is not credit worthy. And so at that point, we started looking for, that's what kind of got this ball rolling, how do we, what can we do so that below basic does not earn credit? And at that, we started experimenting and researching some different scales, and we decided that the cutoff would be 1. So students that got below basic, it's a failing grade. It's nearly passing. You'll see on the scale on the right, it's the highest possible failing grade that a student could get, but it is no longer passing, as we felt it shouldn't be. Chris indicated some predictions that we, as a committee, made, and we did that back in August, and we did. We thought, what's going to happen to these grades? I mean, there was some unknowns. Are we going to see Fs just skyrocket now? Are we going to see As plummet? And that was not the case. We did see As go down, and we did see Fs go up, but if you look at the data that Scott can provide, the F, truthfully, was the least impacted grade of this grading scale. The highest impacted grade was the C. It pushed, it made it more normal. And so our predictions did come true. What surprised us a bit, though, was, I wouldn't say it surprised us, but we were pleasantly surprised to see that they weren't as dramatic as maybe we thought they would be, you know? We figured the Fs would go up because the threshold got bigger. We figured the As would go down, but really it wasn't terribly dramatic. When you look at the progression from the first quarter progress report, which is the first set of grades, to the first quarter report card, to the second quarter progress report, you could see them getting more and more normal.
Good evening. So our next step, if approved by Mr. Evans, is to educate all OPS staff, parents, and students about the changes. And so we would share with our OPS staff with curriculum days or staff meetings. We'd form a parent focus group to determine the best way to share the information to make sure families understand the changes. And then we'd share with our administrators at principal meetings. And we would work through our developed communication plan, which is a plan that we have in place, that just has various ways that we're going to communicate through the rest of the remaining school year, through the summer, and through the beginning of next year. And then we'd begin some professional development, which we would start writing this summer with teachers, data processors, and instructional facilitators.
Good evening. I would just add that kind of a snapshot of how we want to make these changes. We are really excited to move forward, and we'd like to do so as quickly as possible so that we can implement all this work we've been working on. We've all worked really closely to put together what we feel is very important. We would definitely want to have information sharing with the principals and in the instructional leaders. We'd start with teacher trainings, and we'd email to staff as soon as possible with very little change that would really occur this spring. Then we'd work through Infinite Campus and the parent portal to inform others. We'd also then go with the email and backpack information, which is a lot of what we had already done with the piloting this year. So we'd just expand upon that. The newsletter blurb, the student flyers, the brochures for principals, and our social media. And again, we just hope that we can better communicate all of this information from what we field tested and how well we feel it has worked.
It's a pretty good group we work with, and there are several sitting behind who are also part of the committee. If you would stand for just a second. We felt so strongly about the work that we had done, we wanted to be here together, so I would like to acknowledge everyone's work. They spend time away from their classrooms in the first part of the semester and then evenings in the second half of the school year, and it's really an extra amount of work, but it's really making a difference for our teachers. So I would like to publicly thank all of you for all of the work that you have done. I will say that that is as we would like to leave it with you in terms of where we stand, Mr. Evans, and where the board might have many, many questions to come here, but I, you know, I would like to say that we believe like you that we want the best for our students. We believe like you that we want the highest expectations for Omaha Public Schools, and we believe that this grading scale is an example of what that can be. And we believe that it's important to listen to your teachers because your teachers are the professionals in the classroom, and to trust their professional judgment. And they've asked us for years to include the 1.5, and we believe it's time to do that very thing. So I just want to say that, you know, this is a true prideful moment to be able to say, "We'd like to do this in a year," and to come back to you and say, "We can keep moving if you'll let us." So for myself and the committee, I want to thank you for letting us be here today. So for myself and the committee, I want to thank you for letting us be here today.
All right. And again, I do want to echo thank you to all of you. I know this is a lot of hard work and time and effort and getting information out to the students and families that were part of this, so thank you all, because I think this is a change in the discussion that needed to happen. Ms. Williams, I think I saw your hand first.
So first of all, thank you all. I really, I was a part of the last board that sat through this plan. First, let me go back one. I've had the pleasure to work with a few of you over the few years, and so just thank you for the work that you do. This is very important as a parent as well. I've always struggled with the grading scale, and it's come, for me, this has come a long way, although this is my last year as a parent. But in a few years, they'll have a granddaughter in the system, and it'll be even greater. So I just wanted to quit a refresher. I can't remember back in the summer, what classes were field-tested?
That is a great question. So 4th grade math, 7th grade language arts, social studies, excuse me, 7th grade social studies. If you give me half a second, I'd like to walk over to my notebook and get an exact list for you.
I'll give you two seconds.
I have an exact list that I could get you, yes. Let me go get that right now.
Well, in the meantime, I'm going to fill those two seconds.
In the meantime, do you want to clarify that you will still be a parent, you just won't be an OPS parent?
No. I'm done. May 26th, I'm done. Just sending her off.
I'll let CK prep for his next one. It's 4th grade math, social studies, 7th grade, English Language Arts, 8th grade, Physical Science, 8th grade, Modern World History, 1, 2, English, 3, 4, Honors English, 3, 4, Algebra, 1, 2, Honors Algebra, 1, 2, Physical Science, 1, 2, Honor Physical Science, 1, 2, with dual language. So just a combination of classes at elementary and secondary.
And then just, how many buildings total?
How many buildings total? All buildings?
All buildings, did, okay. So it was just across the board?
Yeah, so every single building was, in one way or another, had a field test grading scale in it.
Okay. And then my other question is going to be, just on the staff that wasn't a part of the field test, what was their involvement, and how did they give feedback on having input on this?
The staff who were not involved? Well, you know, I don't want to speak too much, but I can tell you that there were many staff that I heard from that were asking if they could use the field test. They were asking for it. Was that your experience? Yeah. We had a lot of staff that would contact me or contact data processors and specifically ask if they could be involved in it early, because they wanted to be able to do, they thought it was a more accurate reflection.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for wearing that central purple. It's my last month as a central mom, so.
Yes, indeed. That's right.
I will remind you that you were once Brian Bear.
And you were once my student.
This is true. This is very true. Mrs. Godding.
So I want to thank everyone as well, because I remember back to a year ago when we were kind of walking through this, and once we came up with the idea of piloting, really the importance of piloting across the district, so that one school wouldn't be more negatively impacted than another one. So I want to thank you for all the effort that it took to get that done. I also want to thank you for, back a couple of screens, the consolidation of the A and the A minus, and the B and the B minus, because as you all know, and you've heard from me probably many times, why was there never a C minus or a D minus? And we also know that nationally, when our kids are competing against kids from other schools for spots in college, for slots, a lot of those schools don't have the A minus, and it has a negative impact on our students. So I really appreciate us cleaning that up and not sending them off with that stigma, potentially. The other thing that I wanted to share was some of the similar comments that Tom Wagner shared. I heard a number of comments first semester from parents who were quite concerned that their students now weren't getting that same grade that they'd gotten in the past. And I think one of the things that you all talked about was that understanding piece, but there's also an effort component on the student part. And so as I remind parents, and I remind my own children, effort is part of that grade that you receive, because you can't just say, oh, I think I've got it, and then not turn in homework or not do other things. And so I think that that probably will be part of a communication that needs to be included, is that student effort as well as understanding. But I did not hear, second semester, those same kinds of comments. So I think maybe people adjusted after that first semester. So in that vein, I would like to say to the Board of Education, not only will we hear complaints on student assignment plan, I am guessing, first semester, we're going to hear a lot of complaints on the grading scale, because there will be misunderstanding that, oh, now you're giving my child a C, and before, they always got Bs, and I don't understand it. So I think that from our perspective, we have to hold solid and steady on all of those struggles that we'll have. The other thing that I guess I would ask is that we start with communication, and maybe, Mr. Evans, I know we send out communication to teachers after board meetings, but I think if we could have the opportunity to send those same kinds of communication out to our parents, I heard quite a bit when Matt and I were at the Burke meeting, of we just want to know the same things that you all know at a high level, and we don't want to hear it necessarily from the newspaper or the TV station. We want to know the facts, the details of what needs to be said to us. So I guess I would encourage us, starting here in May, to get communication out to our parents via email, because as they said to me, we'll either read it or we won't, and if we don't, you can say, well, I sent it to you. And if we do, we have a much better understanding of what's going on and a greater appreciation for what you're trying to do. So I think it's that whole component of, we're not necessarily changing the scale as much as we're asking for more rigor for that same grade, and I don't think anyone should have much of a complaint about that. So anyway, I want to thank you all for the great work you've done.
Thank you.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Ms. America. I strongly echo Ms. Williams and Ms. Godding about just rigor and just our communication and job well done on collaboration. Kudos to Dr. Kerberg for taking the lead on it. I know there were some changes that happened, and we sprung into action, so kudos to you and kudos to Mr. Evans on this. I cannot strongly overemphasize how much communication, communication, communication is going to be needed. And I have faith that we'll try to get it done, because we know that there's going to be a lot of complaints. I want to commend the district as a whole of taking another stance of raising that bar for our students. So when they go out into the real world, they understand that the grading scale at college is going to be drastically different. Typically, most students, their freshman year, get put on academic probation because, not all, some, because of their district's grading scale, and they feel that they're at a B level, but they're actually at a C level. So kudos to everybody for doing that. Obviously, we know the test, the grading scale is going to impact a lot of students that are sitting in that B range and more in the C range, but I think one of the things that we have to do as a community is to encourage our students to step up to that plate, because I really do believe they can achieve that B. So thank you on that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Pearlman.
I want to echo everyone's comments so far. It was a great presentation. Mr. Snow and myself, we were at a Citizens Advisory Committee, as some of you may know, a couple of weeks ago, and questions were asked, and it's great to see such a quick and thorough response. So I appreciate that. And one question I have, because it's just not clear in my mind, is the 1.5 added at the secondary level. Could you just maybe flesh it out for me a little bit? Is that the bottom level, or is there a range there? I'm just not understanding that.
No problem. And this is kind of unique. When we say the secondary level, we mean middle schools and high schools only. And the proficiency scale represents the communication that we would put on an assignment, a mark that a teacher gets to choose when they grade any sort of assignment that they're giving, any assessment. So they can choose a 4, a 3.5, a 3, a 2.5, a 2, and it used to be just a 1. There was no break in there between the 2 and the 1. And now we're recommending, based on teacher feedback, to include that 1.5. And that represented basic and below basic, somewhere between those two. And our goal was to try to allow the teachers to provide an accurate identifier for where that student is between the 1 and the 2, because they feel they need it, they've been saying they need it, and we want to give it to them.
Not necessarily a grade, per se, but a proficiency level?
Exactly. Exactly.
Thanks.
Yeah, you bet.
Mrs. Godding.
Oh, gosh, I lost my train of thought on that one. Oh, no, I know what it was, and this is a data question. Is there any way, and I don't know about this, but when our students take AP tests, is there any way to take a look and say, does that AP test tie back now to the grade that the student has received in the classroom? Or what's the resemblance of those grades? And maybe high school teachers would say that's not appropriate, but I'm just curious to know, if a student gets a 3 on an AP test, did they get a 2 in the class, or a 4, or a 5? I'm just curious about how that all ties together.
Okay. The Research Division does provide an AP report that looks at things like that. I'm not sure what information is in that exactly, but it's certainly something we could look at. Alan is an AP teacher, and so he'll speak to that.
I had that concern myself when we changed our grading scale, what's it been, six years ago? And I'm actually grading, I have my grading scale and AP set so that when I grade tests, an AP grade of a 5 is a 4 on my grading, on the OPS grading scale. An AP grade of a 4 is a 3.5, and et cetera. So my students know that the grades they earn on their tests and the grade they earned on their final last week should give them an idea of how they're going to do tomorrow on their AP test. So there is a correlation.
Okay, that's great. Because I think that from a parent perspective as well, you want to make sure that what your child is bringing home ties to, excuse me, ties to what that AP exam score is that you get back in the summertime, and that it makes sense. So, no, I appreciate that very much.
Okay. I just want to say, did you have, I just want to say thank you again, and I think it is, to echo what Mr. Snow said, it is really important, as we're setting up our students, to go out, once they leave us, and go into whatever type of post-secondary education or on-the-job training that they choose, that they understand the rigor that's going to be expected of them. Because I know I've even had students in my office already this week that have said, well, what is the lowest score I can get to get this grade in this class? And so I think our students, they will work to the level that we put in front of them and hold them to. Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to say, it's very refreshing to me to be talking about achievement and something related to academics, and this, for me, is refreshing, I mean, extremely refreshing. So thank you. I just, I really want to thank all of you again, and let you know how much we appreciate you and how much I appreciate you, and we look forward to more of this.
And Mr. Evans?
Madam President, just a kind of closing comment, that obviously, we've heard a great presentation, a lot of work's been done over, well over a year's time, so obviously, I'm going to take the recommendation and also take in the comments that I heard tonight on specifically communications. I heard several board members say that we need to get that piece of it together, because we've got a great plan that was well-piloted, well-designed by high-quality folks, now let's make sure we educate our parents well. So that'll be our next steps, is putting that communication plan together. And thank you again to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? That's all we got?
All right. We will move on to our action item of the evening, which is J-2A legislative update.
Thank you, Ms. America. This is actually a pretty quick report. It's more just updating you on what we told you would happen this past week and what's going to happen this coming week. There's seven, we finished Day 73 out of the 90 legislative days, we're really in the final turn. The session changed a bit last week when the Forecasting Board forecasted an additional $55 million drop in revenue that they have to, that the legislature has to deal with. That'll be taken up during debate most of this week, and it's, it won't be pretty, because it's deep, deep cuts. On the upside, LB-409, which deals with TOSA, has advanced to final reading. So it appears that we're pretty set on what TOSA will be for next year. Ideally, we don't even get looked at in any additional cuts that are necessary. LB-415 will be debated on, I believe, Thursday. LB-415 is the first retirement, the real retirement bill we've dealt with this year. It does touch on OSERS a bit, makes changes to both Npers and OSERS. The changes would keep OSERS and Npers aligned on these particular changes. There's, the big concern, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of changes in there that I know the teachers have been opposed to, but one, we've been working with NSCA, NASB, other school districts, was that one of the changes in there would prohibit retirees from working for any school district in the state for a period of 180 days after retirement, or for an early retiree for a period of three years after retirement, and it'd be working for the district in any capacity. The problem was that it came to light was that it would have significant impact on our substitute pool, which is already fairly tight, taking out retirees, roughly half of our new subs each year are folks who are within that 180-day period. So that, we've been working with them, with NSCA, NASB, and other districts. We've come up with an amendment that will be filed tomorrow that we're hoping to see if we can get Retirement Committee Retirement Chair to agree to, and if not, we'll make a push on the floor to do that. And that basically would allow substitute teaching up to 45 days during that 180-day period, which should alleviate the pressure on the substitute pool. And LB-512, don't believe it's coming back up this week, but I touched on it, I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of it. That started as a Department of Education cleanup bill, but there's changes to it. There was, at general file, the first level of debate, there's changes to it that would have an impact and kind of got a couple of amendments that are not, that are conflicting. The change was to eliminate the levy exclusion for early retirement incentives. An amendment that got adopted to the bill, there was a change, an amendment that would, instead of having just an elimination, it would phase out the levy exclusion for early retirement incentives. That amendment grandfathered in the what OPS is already obligated to do on ERIs, on early retirement incentives. But then another amendment was adopted that might be in conflict, that would reinstate early retirement incentives, not part of a collective bargaining agreement. early retirement incentives, not part of a collective bargaining agreement. The problem, the issue you should be aware, that applies only to teachers. It does not reestablish exclusions under the levy for administrators or other employees. And finally, we've been working with Megan and David, with NSCA and ASB, other groups, to try to get those two amendments to work together, so that OPS does have our current obligations grandfathered in. LB-634, virtual schools. We were hoping to, we were hoping to try to attach that bill to LB-409, the TOS bill, but we were told that they wanted a clean bill. The governor, the chair of the committee, the speaker, all wanted a clean bill. We worked with Senator Wayne. We did not, after discussion with Senator Wayne and administration, decided not to pursue it. Had we pursued it, I doubt we would have gotten there. There were two other amendments offered, both failed by at least 10 votes. I suspect ours would have had a similar fate. As it stands, we have one more bill we're looking at to try to attach it to. If that doesn't, if that doesn't happen, we'll still be sitting at general file when session convenes in January, and it should come up for debate under its normal order fairly early in the session. And then finally, just an information item for you. LB-651, which is the Reading Improvement Act, is in Education Committee on a 4-4 vote. There's been a motion filed, it's been delayed a couple of times on the agenda. It's a motion to pull the bill from committee. It's a rather unusual motion, requires 25 votes on the floor. That is, again, at the end of the agenda tomorrow. If the amendment were to succeed, then the bill would be placed on general file, notwithstanding committee action. If it fails, the bill is indefinitely postponed or killed for the two-year session. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Are there any board members that have legislative questions? Okay, seeing none, I do want to say thank you. I know we're getting into that part of the session where there are late nights that stretch until very late hours of the evening, as I remember. And I know you and Rochelle and your team are working very hard down there for us and our students and teachers, so thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have anything under receipt of reports, so Mr. Snow?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest, for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Dr. Turnquist, Mark Warnicki, Connie Kenoke, and Legal Counsel, litigation, legal advice, and negotiations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Ms. Williams to go into closed session. Roll call, please.
Holman?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Palermo?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Goddard?
Aye.
Nine?
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of -- we need to add Mark Warnicki. He's on there. Oh, he said that down there. Yeah, he said that. Okay, sorry. The purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Dr. Turnquist, Mark Warnicki, Connie Kenoke, and Legal Counsel, litigation, legal advice, and negotiations. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 8:25 PM.